Good evening, welcome to the September 19th, 2017 Planning Commission Meeting here in the City of San Bruno. If we could, you have the roll call, please.
Vice Chair Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Biassoti. Absent. Commissioner Legacy.
Present.
Commissioner Lethan.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Mason.
Present.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Commissioner Peterson, would you lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a quick reminder, if anybody has their cellphone, now would be a good time to turn it off or put it on vibrate or do something with it. Okay, I'm gonna need to have a motion for the approval of the minutes from August 15th.
I move to approve the minutes from August 15th.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second, okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
I'd like to abstain, I wasn't here.
Very good.
I'll abstain as well.
Okay, two abstentions, alright. Communications. Oh, by the way, they did pass, sorry.
Of Vice Chair and Planning Commissioners. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce our newest Planning Commissioner. The City Council recently selected Linda Mason, Linda Martin Mason, to join the Planning Commission. Our staff met with Linda, did a review of the Planning Commission role and activities, and did a formal orientation. And then this afternoon, our city clerk, Carol Bonner, did the formal swearing-in, so we have a new Planning Commissioner. We welcome Linda to the Commission. Her background is that she's an attorney. She has done considerable work in the area of housing and works for the San Francisco Housing Authority. So, welcome Linda.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be on the Commission.
Alright, okay, well, next item.
Through the chair?
Yeah, please.
Excuse me, Chair, I wanted to just announce that I'm gonna need to step away, I came because, just in case there wasn't a quorum, but I have a family emergency, and so I'm going to step away from the meeting, and I'm sorry I have to do that.
No problem, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item would be a selection of officers, as in for the replacement for Chair, Marie Cail.
In this care, in this case, Vice Chair Chase, we'd be looking for a nomination for Chair, and selection of a Chair to the Planning Commission, and if need be, if need be, the selection of a Vice Chair. So, I would ask that the Commissioners make a motion to nominate a new Chair.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Chase.
I'll accept.
A second, please.
I'll second.
Vice Chair Chase.
Yeah, I'll accept.
In terms of a vote, please?
Pardon me?
In terms of a vote?
Oh, well, don't we have to have some other nominations?
I think we have the one.
Okay, well, okay, well, all those in favor? Or do we do, wait, do we have to do it by a roll call vote, or how do we?
Why don't we do it by roll call vote?
Okay.
Vice Chair Chase.
Aye.
Commissioner Biassoti is absent, Commissioner Legacy.
Aye.
Commissioner Lethan.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mason.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if we could, at this point, then, as Vice Chair Chase is now Chair Chase, we need to select a Vice Chair. So, if we could have a nomination, a second, and a vote, please.
Through the chair, do we normally do it where it's, you know, the next in line, like Rick Biassoti would be?
It wouldn't be necessary to do it that way, you could make a nomination from the people here tonight.
Okay. I'll nominate Commissioner Biassoti, even though he's not here, is that?
Especially since he's not here.
Well, yeah, train runs through town both ways.
I'll second it, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call vote. Chair Chase.
Aye.
Commissioner Legacy.
Aye.
Commissioner Lethan.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mason.
Aye.
And Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. In the event that Commissioner Biassoti decides to decline, then next month we would just go through that process again, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item would be a public comment on items that are not on the agenda. So, if there's anything that is not on the printed agenda that somebody needs to speak about, please go to the Diaz and I'd love to hear from you. If not, I will close that portion of it, and go to item number five, which is Announcement of Conflict of Interest. Are there? Seeing none, okay, we will close that, and moving right along, public hearings. Okay, item A. Staff report, please, thank you.
The item before you tonight is a project at 86 Buena Vista Avenue. It's a corner lot at the corner of Buena Vista and Herman. It's a 6,789 square foot lot. The proposal is for an 895 square foot addition, to convert 500 square foot garage into living area, and to add a new 470 square foot garage, which is going to be switching the original location of the garage from Buena Vista to Herman Street. It's a request for a greater than 50% addition, and to exceed the max, maximum lot coverage of 2,629 square feet, with 2,850 square feet. The new home would be a five-bedroom, four-bathroom home. And I'd just like to point out, it's a pretty straightforward project overall, although, just to bring to your attention, the item was brought forward to the Architecture Review Committee hearing. The Commissioners at that hearing requested that staff research the driveway configuration to ensure that there were no issues with site distance or approach angle. And staff reviewed, the public work staff reviewed the committee's comments, and checked for compliance with the Caltrans Highway Design Manual and ASHTO standards. Found that the current configuration of driveway conforms to both standards, site distance is adequate. Based on a preliminary review, the designers stated that they will bring on an engineer to confirm during the building permit stage. Also wanted to commend the architect on the landscaping work that they did for the project. You can find detailed requests of, the requests that staff made of the applicant during the process on page four of your staff report. The applicant complied with all the requests from staff. Thus, there are no recommendations in the conditions of approval today beyond what is normally required for a project of this type. This concludes my staff report, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. If you have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, is the applicant present? If you could just go to the Diaz or the podium and just give us a brief description of your plan, if you would?
Dear Commissioners, my name is Kenny, I'm the designer of this project. My client bought this house in 2016, and at the time, there were a lot of unpermitted structures at the back of the house. So, all these structures were removed under a separate permit. So, actually, this is the second phase of the project. It went through a public hearing in August, right, August 10th? And Planner Matt already presented in his staff report. So, the only question left is about the the design requirements for AAS HTO, which is American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. So, I already conform, confirmed the design, which meet the requirements. So, yeah, basically, that's all.
Thank you, do the Commissioners have any questions for the architect? Seeing none, okay, I will open it up to the public. Does the public have any comment on this particular item? Okay, seeing none, hope I'm doing this right, we're closing the public comment, thank you very much, and bringing it back to the Commission for comments, motions, whatever.
I move that we approve the, let's see, application number UP-17-005? And with the conditions that are listed here.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Seeing none, it passes, and it was a 10-day appeal period before you can start any work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next item, 851 Cherry Avenue. This is a request for a Plan Development Permit and an Architectural Review Permit to allow for architectural changes and various site improvements throughout the existing Bay Hill Shopping Center, and a sign permit to establish a new Master Sign Program per San Bruno Municipal Code, Section 12.96.190K, 12.108.010A, and 12.104.220C3. Staff report, please.
Thank you and good evening. As indicated, the applicant is proposing a variety of architectural changes and various site improvements throughout the Bay Hill Shopping Center, which also includes the establishment of a new Master Sign Program. As many of you are familiar with the Bay Hill Shopping Center, the location, I mean, it's located on the west side of Cherry Avenue, and we have an overhead exhibit here, so here's Cherry, here's San Bruno Avenue. So, it's located on the west side of Cherry Avenue, in between San Bruno Avenue West to the south, and in between Bay Hill Drive to the north. The site itself was first constructed in 1972, and consists of five separate buildings consisting of approximately 121,000 square feet of gross floor area. The shopping center includes two major tenants, Molly Stones and CVS Pharmacy, as well as a variety of other tenants, including restaurants, offices, and a host of personal services. The project before the Commission tonight calls for a Plan Development Permit, an Architectural Review Permit, and a sign permit to establish a new Master Sign Program. This type of project requires review by the Architecture Review Committee, and then ultimate approval from the Planning Commission. One of the most notable changes throughout the site are some of the architectural changes that are being proposed. Most notably, the parapet walls would be extended between four and seven feet in total height. And if you look at the slide above, you'll notice that there's the existing elevation right here, that shows the existing configuration, and then the proposed elevation just above. And you can see that there's varying parapet wall heights throughout this segment of the shopping center. And this does really two things, one, it naturally provides a screen for existing rooftop mechanical equipment at certain locations throughout the shopping center. And it also provides a new space for tenant signage, which would be wall signage right along here. Additionally, one of the biggest changes is the applicant is proposing to cut back the existing 10-foot Eve overhang by approximately four feet, thereby leaving six feet of covered walkway. And this does a number of things as well, one, it provides more light for the existing tenants within the shopping center, and it still provides enough protection for pedestrians during inclement weather. New paint is also proposed throughout the shopping center, and we actually have physical color-material sample boards over there, and I'd be happy to pass that to the Commission. But we do have the sample boards on this slide as well. Six new colors are proposed. We have a light cream, a light gray, and off-white color that would be utilized for the extended parapits and the walls. The cornice and supporting overhang brackets would be painted black, right here. And then we also have, the vertical elements would be painted dark gray and brown. And then the eve fascia would incorporate and utilize a light blue color. Additionally, the overhangs would include new decorative roof tiles. Staff is in support of these decorative roof tiles, and we find that the colors blend in well with the proposed color scheme that's being considered by the Planning Commission tonight. There's also a number of site improvements that the applicant is proposing. Just to get everyone familiar with the site plan we have here, we have San Bruno Avenue, again, right here. Then we have Cherry Avenue, right here. The applicant is proposing a four-foot walkway located just east of the Starbucks Onsite, which is located right here. Starbucks is right there, and then a four-foot walkway is proposed right in this area. Additionally, an onsite crosswalk and walkway located just north of the Cherry Avenue driveway would be widened to accommodate more pedestrians. So, here's the Cherry Avenue driveway, and then the onsite walkway that would be widened is located right there. This is important because it is the most utilized onsite crosswalk, given the fact that the Bay Hill Office Complex is located just to the east of the site, so many of the Bay Hill Office Park workers utilize that crosswalk and gain access to the site via this specific onsite crosswalk. I'd like to also point out that outdoor seating is proposed throughout the shopping center. Specifically, the applicant is proposing outdoor seating adjacent to the walkway of the North B Building Pad. And there'd be outdoor seating incorporated next to the adjacent, the former Radio Shack site. Bike racks are also proposed throughout the majority of the shopping center at 10, or I'm sorry, at seven different locations. And there'd be a total bike parking that would be able to accommodate 56 bikes onsite. A new decorative and enhanced concrete overlay is proposed at three specific locations as well. Specifically, this would be a stamped concrete finish. This stamped concrete finish would be installed at the walkway adjacent to the North B Building Pad. Additionally, it would be installed at the walkway located on the northwest portion of the shopping center, adjacent to the North Shops Building Pad. And lastly, the stamped concrete would also be applied to the southwest portion of the shopping center, adjacent to Molly Stones. New rooftop mechanical equipment would be installed, and the existing trash enclosures would be modified to incorporate swinging doors and covered roofs. A new trash enclosure would also be incorporated for the North B Building Pad. The applicant is proposing a number of landscaping improvements throughout the site as well. Drought-tolerant landscaping is proposed throughout the entire site, specifically, seven different ground covers, six different potted plantings, five different shrubs, two different trees, and one type of vine would be installed throughout the site. All selected plant materials would have a low water use classification, which staff is in support of. Additionally, the applicant is proposing a new Master Sign Program. The new Master Sign Program would provide regulations for new identification signs for the shopping center itself, as well as new signage regulations for all major tenants, inline tenants, and pad tenants. Wall signs are proposed for the major tenants, inline tenants, and pad tenants, and those wall signs would incorporate a halo illuminated reverse pan, channel letter, and logos throughout the entire site. Staff finds that the proposed halo lighting would create a new and fresh look throughout the entire shopping center. I would like to point out that the applicant is also proposing to modify the two existing monument signs onsite. As you may recall, there's one monument sign fronting Cherry Avenue, and then there's another monument sign fronting San Bruno Avenue. In an effort to comply with a staff recommendation to retain at least four feet of clearance between the ground level and the bottom of the monument sign, the applicant has provided two options for the Planning Commission to consider. Option one, which is shown on the left, would measure 14 feet 3 inches in height, and 17 feet 6 inches in width at its widest point, and would contain five cabinets in between each column. Option two, which is on the right-hand side, would measure 12 feet in total height, and would have the same width of 17 feet 6 inches at its widest point. And would only contain three cabinets in between the two columns. The only difference between the two signs, monument signs that you see here, is the overall height of the sign and the number of cabinets incorporated in between each column element. Staff is in support of either option, either option one or two, staff would support. The monument signs would incorporate and utilize the same colors that are proposed throughout the shopping center. And the upper cabinets, and the lower cabinets would also use halo lighting, which would match the effect that's found throughout the shopping center. This project was reviewed by the Architecture Review Committee at their June 15th meeting, and the project was forwarded on to the Planning Commission with several recommendations that are found on page two and three of the staff report. I'm not gonna go through them all, but I just want to highlight a few of them that were not already mentioned. First and foremost, the app, or the Architecture Review Committee recommend that the applicant replace the existing chain-link fence located between Tenant Space 31 and Molly Stones with a more decorative permanent fence. The applicant has updated the plans and has agreed to do so. Additionally, there was a recommendation to incorporate vines on all existing and proposed trellis features located at the northwest walkway. The applicant has updated the landscaping plans accordingly, and all trellises found throughout the shopping center will incorporate landscaping. There was a recommendation to replace the existing junipers located along the Bay Hill Drive frontage with drought-tolerant landscaping, and the applicant has updated the landscaping plans accordingly. There was also a recommendation to replace the existing Molly Stones awning with a new awning that is more consistent with the proposed color scheme, and the applicant updated the color-material sample board accordingly. And I'm sure you guys noticed that the new awning color blends in well with the selected colors. And lastly, there was a recommendation to prohibit A-frame signage throughout the shopping center, and the Master Sign Program has been updated to include that language. Overall, staff does support the project, and we do find that the proposed facade upgrades and site enhancements, landscaping improvements, and the Master Sign Program will create a more inviting atmosphere, and really, a better sense of overall place. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the application based on findings 1 through 11 and conditions of approval 1 through 50. We do have a few modifications to some of the conditions of approval that I'd like to go over. Condition of approval number seven, which is regarding the permitted construction hours. Everything would remain the same, however, the last sentence currently reads, "Any proposal for weekend work shall be made in writing at least two weeks in advance of requested weekend work." The applicant has indicated that they are dealing with a number of tenants here, and they have to think, you know, fast regarding the overall construction schedule, and would recommend that staff reduce the two-week requirement. And at this point, we feel comfortable reducing that two-week requirement to a one-week requirement. So, basically, the last sentence would read, "Any proposal for weekend work shall be made in writing at least one week in advance of requested weekend work." There is also condition of approval number 17, which is regarding public safety improvements related to the crosswalk connecting Walmart.com to the Bay Hill Shopping Center. The condition of approval would remain as is, however, staff is proposing to add a sentence at the end of this condition, essentially stating, "In the circumstance that an option has not been determined, the applicant shall submit a $25,000 performance deposit prior to building permit issuance." These are the only two modifications to the conditions of approval. With that, that concludes my staff presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any clarifying questions that you have. And I'd also like to point out that the applicant is in attendance tonight as well, thank you.
Thank you, good report, okay. Commissioners have any questions for staff here?
Can we through the chair? The two things I noticed, well, first of all, this is a great, great presentation and proposal. Bay Hill can use a little updating, and it looks like this is very energetic. The things that I noticed that were becoming a challenge with the roof, the roof color is just, looks like all the color is coming off the tiles, for whatever reason. So, I'd like to ask the staff to make sure the new roofing tiles have color that has some kind of known ability to last longer than a few years. And secondly, the maintenance of the trash enclosures behind the stores and adjacent, even adjacent to some of the stores, has been a little of a challenge. In other words, the doors have been swinging open, they could strike cars driving by. There's been trash all over the street at some times. And I'd like you to consider a condition of approval that the trash areas be maintained on a daily basis, or more frequent if necessary, to keep the doors shut when not in use, and clean up any spillage.
Thank you for your comments, I believe we can add that as a condition regarding the trash enclosures.
And it's particularly a challenge, I think, because it's hard to identify which trash enclosure belongs to who, so if everybody has to get with the program, it would be great.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments, or staff?
Based on, through the chair, if you please. Based on what I've looked at, it seems like all the building signs that will be above the awnings, according to this plan, are limited in terms of size, but not in terms of lettering form, or font, or colors? Is that correct?
Yeah, as the master program, Master Sign Program is currently drafted, there is no regulations regarding colors, but there are regulations regarding the overall sign area and overall letter height. For major tenants, if you turn to page, let's see, page six within your staff report, we break out the overall requirements for major tenants, and then for inline store tenants and pad tenants. For instance, major tenants being CVS Pharmacy and Molly Stones. The letter size restrictions are essentially five foot maximum. So, the overall letter height and logo can go up to five feet in total, in total height. Additionally, there's what we refer to as visual open space restrictions that are found within the Master Sign Program. And the visual open space restrictions for major tenants indicates that the overall sign width and height shall not exceed 75% of the horizontal fascia open area, nor 75% of the vertical fascia open area. And there's similar, similar regulations for the inline tenants and pad tenants, except for the fact that the logo and overall size restrictions would be limited to three feet in overall maximum height, but the same visual open space restrictions would apply to those tenants as well.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was seeing from the illustrations in the half-size here as well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other?
Through the chair?
Commissioner?
Mason.
Thank you, Mason, sorry.
Can I, I just wanna ask, can you clarify a little bit more on which sidewalks are gonna be widened? And instead of referring them by building size, would you mind referring to them as what stores they're in front of?
So, the, this, yeah, definitely, I'd be happy to do that. So, going back to the site plan, and if you wanna look at a larger version within your plan set, you can look, turn to sheet SP2. There currently is a row of parking located just to the east of Starbucks, which is onsite, part of their property. And the applicant is incorporating a four-foot wide walkway in between the two rows of parking, which is located right along here. So, what that does is that the south side parking stalls would go from standard stalls down to compact spaces to accommodate this four-foot wide walkway. Additionally, there's an onsite walkway, or crosswalk, here, that would be widened slightly. Right there, which is located just to the east of Nueve, the restaurant located on the eastern portion of that North B Building Pad.
The widening of the sidewalk that is east of Starbucks, is that going to also include then a direct path to the sidewalk that goes up to the first sign? Because right now, I can Because right now, I can, here's my concern, is right now, I have two kids, and I'm with a stroller on one hand, and I've got the other one who's running on the street, right? So when you're walking from Starbucks to get to the street, not on the side of Nueva, but on the side of Starbucks, there's no sidewalk unless you cross past the sign. There's a little path there, there's no crosswalk. So if that street's going to be widened, can it be connected to, and can there be a sidewalk created that will connect to the main street sidewalk, if that makes sense? And then also with a crosswalk added from one end to the other in front of the sign?
So basically, you're referring to this area right here and adding a connection between the onsite four-foot walkway to San Bruno Avenue.
Correct.
We can explore that possibility with the applicant during the planning phase. And when we were working very closely with the applicant, we inquired about the possibility of making more onsite pedestrian improvements. At that point, there is a slope along the San Bruno Avenue side that they would have to contend with, and there could be some ADA implications as well, but we could definitely explore that with the applicant.
Yeah, I think that would be great. And then is there any possibility of, I don't know if there's any beautification or expansion of that center walkway that's going from the CVS to the Starbucks?
Oh, right here, yeah, so there's an existing walkway going in the north and south direction that connects Starbucks with CVS, correct?
Correct, and is there, is anything going to be done to that space as well?
There'll be some landscaping enhancements on either side of the walkway, but the walkway itself will remain as is. It will not be expanded in any way.
Okay. Will any of the parking outlets be electrical, for electrical cars?
That is not included within this specific application, but that's again, something that we can work with the applicant on. And I'll have to work with the building official on this. It may be required with the amount of tenant improvements that they're doing, but we'll work with the applicant and the building official regarding that matter.
Okay. And then the last thing is, as far as lighting, would there be any improved lighting in the actual parking lot?
Yes, the applicant is proposing LED lighting throughout the entire parking lot. So at the very last attachment to the staff report, there's a photometrics plan, which shows existing conditions and then proposed conditions. So yes, the lighting would be replaced.
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Anybody else have any?
I do through the chair. I wanted to echo what Commissioner Mason said regarding the connection, a pedestrian connection between the new four-foot sidewalk beside Starbucks to the San Bruno sidewalk as well. I've also experienced dangerous traffic situations there, particularly because the incoming traffic coming into the parking lot is fairly blind. And typically, when you're trying to cross there, it's really dangerous and tricky. And I would absolutely love to see some changes there discussed with the applicant, as well as maybe dropping that cross, that crossover perhaps a little bit closer to the former Radio Shack, just to draw the pedestrian traffic away from that blind hill coming into the, coming into the parking lot.
Understood. So make the connection on the east side of the existing curb cut closer to the Radio Shack side?
Perhaps, yes. But, yeah, just wanted to share that experience.
Understood, thank you.
And we'd really encourage you to pursue that.
Excuse me, through the chair if I could. I think that in terms of designing something like that, we can certainly suggest a condition of approval. And then I think it would be better for the staff to work with the applicant in the field to determine the width and precise location to ensure compliance with ADA and ensure adequate site distance at that intersection at the driveway at San Bruno Avenue West. But we understand your concerns, but the actual design, I think we should work with our city engineer and the applicant's design professional to determine the exact design.
Wonderful, thank you. My second question is about, the color board is beautiful, the samples provided look wonderful. My one observation is that some of the colors are very light, and I'm wondering about the maintenance of this color, given the climate, and whether this is going to show mold or mildew, and how that's, how the maintenance of this is going to result in the overall appearance over time.
Again, through the chair, I would suggest that perhaps the applicant could respond to that in terms of the proposed color selection and how that color would hold up over time, given our weather conditions.
Any other questions, staff and commissioners?
Just another, just a suggestion that maybe, just going back to the sidewalk for a second, if I may, through the chair. If that is even a possibility to also, if not expand that four-foot walkway, maybe even expand the existing connection. So if you walk around the, so I don't have the little pointer, but if you walk around Starbucks, actually connect the already existing little sidewalk to, and then expand the sidewalk where the parking is? So just make it where the L is?
Right in here?
Right, like, so go down and then to the right, to the east. So actually creating a little sidewalk there that goes right into San Bruno Avenue. And I know that's a design, it's a design issue, but just another suggestion.
Any other questions from staff or comments from commissioners? Okay, so I'm going to ask the applicant, if they would please step up and give us your name and brief description, and, or not brief.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Pete Nodler, Regency Centers, thanks for your time tonight. We've worked very closely with Matt and David for a very long time to bring a very good upgrade to the center. And I hope you're happy with the elevations and what we're doing. We try to do this with all of our older centers. The center is, was explained, is very old, and not much has been done to it. And we own a lot of shopping centers that look like this, and we're trying to bring a fresh look to them all as much as we can. And again, I hope you're happy with what you see. We agree with the staff report, and Matt did a great job. I don't have much more to add. The amended conditions are fine. Couple of things that were brought up, the trash enclosures. I understand your comment about that. We struggle with it also, because what happens is the trash companies, the big trucks come in there, they do their thing, and then they leave. They don't shut the doors. And so, and we try to get the tenants to cooperate and go out there and shut the doors as well. It's very difficult. So what I can do is I can bring it up with our property management group and let them know, remind them that's an issue, and we'll try to come up internally in a way to get that taken care of. It's a struggle for us in all our centers, so I appreciate your concern. But I'll do the best I can with our property management group. I think there was another comment about additional sidewalk. We had looked at that with staff. It's problematic in a couple of ways. Number one, there's, like it was talked about, there's a huge steep climb there. And not just ADA, but it might be a safety situation also with people coming down on that hill. Also, just to bring it up, is we're trying to do our best with this shopping center, and we have very, we have budget concerns on this. And I know it's not your concern about budgets, but we're trying to bring the best-looking center that we can in a budget that works for us. And so that would really tip us over into an area where it would be problematic for us. We understand the concern, and we're not adding any square footage. We're keeping the center pretty much, the grossly leasable area is the same. If we were to make changes to the center in the future, if we were to add square footage or something like that, then we would certainly like to work with staff on it. But right now, it'd be problematic for us to add that sidewalk. I appreciate your concern. Was, I thought there was something else about colors, maybe?
Yeah, color of the tile?
Yeah, our architects here, Young, do you mind coming up? Because I don't, our architect Young Wong is here, and maybe he can address that.
And again, through the chair, clarification on that. It seemed that the Planning Commissioner was concerned about the light color or colors being selected, and would those weather well over time, given our local climate conditions?
I think the colors that was chosen for the whole center and the type of construction that we do is no different standard that we do for the rest of the centers that we do with Regency or whoever. Regency has a maintenance program that they do, and their cleanup, their maintenance, and how they do things. All their centers, if you go to their centers, they're all pretty good-looking, and they're pretty maintained very well. As far as the tile that you mentioned, I actually looked it up on Boral Tile. They have a 20-year warranty, so we're pretty much all going to be retired by the time it starts fading away. So I don't think that's a concern right now that is going to be an issue.
Do commissioners have any other questions for the applicants? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. The monument sign discussion, we like the options, but we would prefer option number one, which is the slightly larger sign. We agree to keep the, you know, the site distance that staff was concerned about. That's not an issue. It's just, we'd like to be able to get our tenants on there, on the sign. So if we could ask for that, that'd be great.
That's the one that has the four, four, whatever you call those, cabinets, thank you, something like that?
I think they define it as five cabinets, because one, the bottom one is two tenants on there, I think. That's, yeah. Go ahead.
Through the chair, I'd like to ask a question. I've walked that area around that shopping center a lot with my dog, and I don't mind going over grass or landscaping where there's been some paths worn by the, either the customers or the people who work in the businesses. I agree with the commissioners who expressed the concern about that walkway condition at that driveway near Starbucks, because cars zip in and out pretty quick. And if you don't have an obvious way for pedestrians to cross there, it could be a liability issue. Just throwing that out for you to put in your discussion about what you might do with those. And if you're worried about the ADA conditions, I think you could probably put a passway across that vegetation that's at the corner of El Camino or San Bruno Avenue and Cherry, that was fairly close to whatever you need for ADA. Because the main reason there's a slope issue there is because the landscaping is built up in a mound away from the sidewalk. Thanks for your patience.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay, so now I'm going to open it up to the public. Anybody wish to speak on this item? You'd just be kind enough to give us your name and fire away with your questions?
My name is Calista. I live on Poplar Avenue. And through the chair, I commend the staff. It was a really great presentation, and also through the chair to the property owner, I really appreciate the investments that's being made to bring up this property. So I had a couple of questions and comments. First of all, also, I want to welcome and thank Commissioner Mason for your request for the project applicant, owner, whatever, to put in EV charging stations. I think this meets a lot of the goals that we need for our community. And one question that I had, I'm sorry if I missed this, I don't know. Is this part of the Bay Hill specific plan? Does this relate? Is this apart, completely apart from it? Just short answer.
David, I have to refer you on that. Through the chair, it is a part of the Bay Hill specific plan study area. Yes, it is.
Okay, but it can operate with what is being discussed, all the improvements here, independent of that site planning that's coming?
Yes, it can. This is a facade and site improvement upgrade, and given the nature of the proposed application, yes, indeed.
Great. It looks beautiful. I appreciate it. One thing I wanted to actually ask or say, I am hopeful that someday there will be a circulating shuttle program in San Bruno. So one of my questions is for this site, I'm wondering possibly, as it is being thought of and envisioned, where a San Bruno circulating shuttle, that may be either a last mile that takes things from BART, Caltrain, to our shopping areas and so on and so forth. I realize we don't have it, I realize that can't be a condition, but I think that it is something that I'm hoping that this shopping center will think about, because this is one of our areas that, you know, people would want to get to. So I imagine, I don't know if there already is a shuttle stop nearby that wouldn't be taking any of the transit lanes, or where in the future, something like that, either onsite or onsite, that could provide for something like that, that I'm hoping our community will have someday. So it doesn't need to be solved or even answered. I'm just hoping that there will be someplace in the site for that future possibility.
And again, through the chair, if I could, comment on that. This application is really focusing on facade and site improvements. But in terms of the Bay Hill specific planning effort, we fully expect that wider transportation needs and issues of the Bay Hill study area and connecting that area overall with key activity areas within the community, such as downtown, Caltrain, and BART, would be considered as part of that process.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wishing to have a comment on this particular item? Seeing none, thank you for your comment, and I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion or motion?
Again, if I could, through the chair, a couple of comments based on some of your questions and suggestions. You'll notice in the suggested conditions of approval, recommended conditions of approval from staff, there's a condition number 10 that talks about requiring a property maintenance and management plan for this site. And there was a concern raised about regular maintenance of the trash enclosure areas. I would suggest that to condition 10, you may want to indicate specifically that among the matters that would be addressed would be regular maintenance of the trash enclosure areas. So that could be added to condition 10 and be part of the overall maintenance and management plan. That would be a way of addressing that. There is recent state legislation regarding EV charging stations that staff will investigate and work with the applicant to determine exactly how this project may need to be adjusted to conform with those state requirements. I'm not familiar exactly in the moment with those requirements, but they were passed, they are effective, and I believe that they could apply to this project. So we'll look at that in terms of what is the mandate from the state that we need to implement in terms of EV charging stations as it would apply to this project. I'm not sure where you may want to go with the walkway from Starbucks, the vicinity of Starbucks out to San Bruno Avenue West. We heard from the applicant some concern about moving forward with that element. I would say if that's something you would want to pursue, that the applicant, there could be a condition such as, the applicant shall work with the staff to investigate the feasibility of a walkway connection from the Starbucks location to San Bruno Avenue West. The walkway would facilitate a safe connection and meet code requirements, including ADA requirements. So I say feasibility because there are some issues here in terms of site distance, slope, et cetera, that I think we need to look at to see if indeed this is something that can be done. If it's something that can be done, we would be with that condition, able to work with the applicant to do that. But again, I would suggest this kind of language describing investigating the feasibility. And if so, we would work with the applicant to include this, if you so direct. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one question for you. I have one question for you on your first comment under the recommendations, number 10. So subsection A there, general cleaning of litter and debris on-site, what you would propose as far as language is concerned, would that technically be going to like subsection D, or would you just continue on with the maintenance part of that under A?
I think it would be a good idea to call out regular maintenance of the trash enclosures on-site, to actually add that, and not just assume it's going to be a part of the regular maintenance, but specifically call it out, and you could add that as a D, for example, and we could, you know, work with the wording, but we would call it out specifically.
Okay.
Again, if you direct.
Okay, okay. Any other comments, questions here from commissioners? If not, then...
Is the public hearing still open?
Yes, yes, it did. I did close it, didn't I? I opened it, I think I closed it.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
It's back to us.
Well, I'm willing to make a motion, I hear some comments that should be incorporated in it. I recommend the Planning Commission approve PDP 16-1, Architectural Review Permit 16-7, Sign Permit 16-027, based on Findings 1 through 11, Subject to Conditions of Approval 1 through 50, with the additions, as staff discussed, that a specific item D be added to condition 10 to address regular maintenance of the trash areas, and also an additional condition 51, that staff work with the applicant to consider what sidewalk improvements might be made near the Starbucks entrance to the property. That's my motion.
And again, through the chair, we heard from the applicant a desire for a particular sign, I think it was a five cabinet, or five cabinets sign, you may want to address that as well.
Okay, I'll add that condition 52 be that option one be the option that's preferred.
Okay, we have a motion.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, seeing none, it has passed a 10-day appeal period.
And through the chair, I'd just like to point out that we will be working with the applicant to check state law regarding the EV charging stations as well in terms of our follow-up on that matter.
Very good.
Moving forward on the agenda, we would like to point out that tonight, we do have an item that we'd like to bring forward to you, I've placed staff reports at the dais for you to review regarding a matter that we'd like to bring forward under an urgency provision, and this matter has to do with the acquisition of a property by the city of San Bruno, and there's a requirement when the city acquires property to make a general plan conformity determination according to Government Code 65402. The city attorney, Mark Zaffrona, will give an overview and give some guidance as to how to move forward with this item.
Thank you very much, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. So there are two actions before you this evening that we're asking you to consider. The first action is to place this item on the agenda, and the second action is to consider it on the merits. So the Brown Act is state law and your bylaws allow bodies like yourself to place items on the agenda if there is an urgency, and that urgency arose after the Planning Commission agenda was published. So what happened in this case is, as David mentioned, the city council is in the process of awarding a bid, in fact, already awarded a bid, for the construction of the new Earl Glenview Park in the PG&E explosion-damaged area. And that occurred at a prior meeting, but as the Planning Commission packet to you was going out the door last week, we decided to add an item to the city council agenda for Tuesday, which authorizes the various staff members to open an escrow and then close that escrow in relatively rapid fashion, so the construction of the park can get underway. So as a predicate to that action, we wanted to bring to you the decision that the Planning Commission has to make regarding whether the city's acquisition of that property is consistent with the general plan. So let me just take a minute and go through those actions. So under state law, you can add an item to the agenda by a two-thirds vote if you find that there is an urgency about it and that urgency arose after the publication of the agenda. So if you decide to add this item to the agenda, that would require a motion and a second. And if that motion passes, then the item is added to the agenda, and then we can have a discussion on the merits. I'll just take a moment to advise you about the merits of the item. And so this is a situation in which there was a home located on this property, and tragically during the PG&E gas explosion, two members of the Greek family were killed, Jacqueline and Janessa, in that home. The Greek family had approached the city sometime after that with a request or an offer to donate that property to the city, so it could be attached to and used as part of the new Earl Glenview Park reconstruction project, which the city council has already approved. And so those negotiations have been concluded, and the city council is scheduled on Tuesday, actually, to approve the acceptance of that donation. So there's no additional cost to the city for that donation, except for escrow costs and so on, which are going to be covered fully by the trust that PG&E established to fund all of the city's expenses after the explosion. So the action before you tonight is to determine if the use of the property as a park is consistent with the general plan. So if you decide to add this item to the agenda, you can consider the fact that there isn't a park in the neighborhood anymore, and there will be a park, of course, if this action is taken. And we pointed out on page two of the staff report that there are seven general plan policies that are consistent, and with which this action is consistent in terms of the general plan. And in addition to that, I wanted to let you know, it's also pointed out in the staff report that there's been a great deal of public outreach regarding the park and its amenities, we've listed those in the staff report as well. I think it's safe to say everybody, including the community, is on board with those, and perhaps most importantly, for this particular item for the city council, the design includes memorial plaques for each of the families who lost loved ones in the explosion. So the Greek family will be honored with such a plaque at the park. So that concludes my staff report, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if you don't have any questions, then I would request that somebody make a motion to add the item to the agenda. That would require a two-thirds vote. There's two, four, five of you, according to my math, that's four of you, would have to say yes, so keep that in mind when you're making your motion and voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair, Commissioner Peterson.
Would this piece of land to be created into a park, would that connect with some other parkland right in the same area?
Yes, it's just adjacent to the originally existing Glenview Park, which would now then be expanded to include this piece of property that is directly adjacent to it.
Right, that's what I thought, although the map wasn't, didn't include that, so I want to make sure.
Oh, yeah, we tried to show it with the colors, but maybe it didn't come out, sorry about that.
No, the colors are nice. Through the chair, Commissioner Peterson. I think this is pretty straightforward, I'd like to make a motion that the commission places item on the agenda as an urgency matter for consideration this evening for the staff presentation.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I have one question. Is this going to be a roll call, or is this just?
You can do a voice vote if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good, that passes. Thank you very much. That's part one.
The item is now on the agenda, so if you'd like to discuss, ask questions, take any public input, and/or make a motion on the merits.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I'd like to recommend that the chair open a public hearing, so we can get any public input before we discuss it.
It's a very good idea, that's kind of what I was thinking. So at this point, I will open it up, public comment, if anybody from the public wishes to speak on this particular item of urgency, now would be the time. And open and closed. Okay, so, sorry. That's back to the Planning Commission here. It's in our hands.
Through the chair, just a quick question, just a point of clarification, so we're just authorizing the city to open and close, to really just open and close escrow, is that it?
No, that's the city council's action.
That's the city council, okay.
On Tuesday, your action is to find that the city's proposed acquisition of the property is consistent with its general plan.
Okay, but will an actual plan of what the park would look like come back to us at some point?
No, that's already been approved, it's gone through the city approval process, which already went through the city council, it's already been approved, construction contract has already been led by the city council.
Through the chair, a little clarification on this, we have a new commissioner tonight, and other commissioners that are fairly new with this as well. This may be the first 65402 proceeding for at least one of you, and maybe for three of you. The idea here is that the Planning Commission is to look at the property in terms of, does it meet basic general plan policy? And what the staff has done, the city attorney and staff have done in the staff report, is to look at specific general plan policies pertaining to that land in terms of its designation, and you'll see that in the staff report, items such as providing opportunities to meet our objective of adding 20 acres of parkland, for example, providing opportunities for a broad range of recreation opportunities, providing for opportunities near to residential neighborhoods for recreational opportunities, and there are many more policies that have been cited in the staff report. So essentially, the Planning Commission's role is to look at the property in terms of, as the city would acquire this piece, is this property consistent in conformance with basic general plan policies? We believe it is, and we've cited a number of such policies. So basically, your action tonight at this point is, is this property in terms of its intended use in conformance with cited general plan policies? And we believe it is, and we're recommending that you go forward tonight and take that action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I'd like to move that the commission pass a resolution confirming the finding that the acquisition of this property for use as a park, it conforms and is consistent with the San Bruno general plan, and that is because it's adjacent to an existing park in the neighborhood, expands that park, and provides further opportunity for recreational use by the neighbors in the city.
There's a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Seeing none, thank you very much, that has passed as well.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson, please.
Not to be a pass, but this is a resolution, doesn't it need a roll call vote?
Not necessarily.
No?
Thank you.
Although Roberts rules of order.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, next item, city staff discussion.
Chair Chase and Planning Commissioners, the next item on your agenda is an oral report from your staff, and it's an update regarding Victory Honda and a matter that we indicated as staff that we would get back to you and give you an update regarding. I passed out just a moment ago a letter that we received from Victory Honda, and it cites a number of things that they've done in terms of addressing some of the concerns that have been raised by neighbors and the Planning Commission in the past. In terms of this update, staff has received, and the Planning Commission received, a number of complaints about the operations at Victory Honda, and the staff has worked with several staff members at Victory Honda to address these concerns. These concerns relate to conditions of approval on a conditional use permit that's been in place for a number of years, and also general nuisance complaints. Focusing on the concerns regarding the CUP, Conditional Use Permit, concerns had to do with hours of operation, parking on memory lane, maintenance of landscaping on the property, looking at how vendors come and park on memory lane in the red zone to deliver packages, having adequate onsite parking. Those are a number of the concerns that have come up, and then additionally, there were concerns regarding nuisances such as light and glare from the lighting on the property, car alarms going off, and then also smoking of some of the employees on the site and litter in the area. To give you kind of an update of what we did as staff, in December of last year, we actually opened a code enforcement case on this matter, and cited a number of the issues I raised. In February of this year, we provided an update to you in terms of some of the work that we had done. Actually, we met with the management and representatives at Victory Honda, we explained that they were working outside the cited hours of operation in the conditional use permit, there were concerns about parking on memory lane, concerns about delivery vehicles, parking in the red zone, all the issues I raised, and we began working with them, I think constructively, to try to address a number of those issues. We've made some progress, we reported back to you again in March of this year, so initially we gave you an update in February of this year, then another one in March, and then we indicated that we would get back to you about this time, six months later, and give you a more detailed update as to what we've been able to do. So I'd like to kind of run through some of the work we've done, some of the progress we've made in terms of working with the Victory Honda staff. In terms of hours of operation, condition number three of the CUP, the Conditional Use Permit, specifies the hours of operation, basically 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM Saturdays, and 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Sundays. We found in the past that they actually, on Sundays and at times, were operating beyond and outside of these hours, and that in terms of their postings on the website and elsewhere, their postings in terms of their operating hours were not consistent necessarily with these hours stated in the Conditional Use Permit. They've made adjustments, they've adjusted the hours on the website, they've adjusted their hours at the location, and they have provided information to their staff indicating that the staff must work, must operate within these prescribed hours. Kind of moving forward to another issue, another issue, condition number four, had to do with parking in memory lane. At times, there would be cars, their cars, parked in memory lane, precluding really pedestrians from using memory lane, and they've indicated to their staff that that's not allowable. They have ordered a baller to put in place to actually physically preclude a car parking in memory lane, precluding pedestrian access in that area, and that should be installed shortly. So that's being addressed. I should point out, too, as we met with the Victory Honda staff, they've actually put together what they're referring to as Being a Good Neighbor Initiative, a form that indicates what behavior they're expecting of their employees, and having their employees actually sign this form. And to give you an... And to give you an idea in terms of trying to be more proactive in addressing some of the concerns I mentioned, this Good Neighbor Initiative that they're requiring their employees to sign, it indicates such things as not using the panic or lock alarms to locate or identify vehicles, using employee parking locations, not parking on Linden Avenue, smoking is only permitted in designated areas on the premises, and disposing your litter in designated receptacles. By the way, they put out four receptacles on the property, and they've designated smoking areas for their employees, abiding by the speed limits for all road tests and test drives, not utilizing Linden Avenue for any road tests. Service employees will strictly abide by the stated hours of operation, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, without exception. They also have, in terms of their policy for implementation and then monitoring, if there's a violation, a single violation, a verbal warning. Two violations could be a one-day suspension, three violations could be a three-day suspension. So, this is the sort of more proactive approach that they're taking to working with their staff. In addition, they are also working with some of the vendors, so for example, with UPS and FedEx, they've actually sent out registered letters to both of those organizations, asking them, directing them, that their trucks should not drop off packages on Linden, but should come on the property. So they've given us copies of the letters that they've sent to both Unishipper's and to FedEx. They've also posted signs on the property, and their staff has directed that if one of these vendors is parking in a red zone on Linden, that they're to tell the vendor to drive around to El Camino Real, come on the site, and stop on the site to deliver a package. Another area that we were working with, the staff and management at Victory Honda on, had to do with parking. And we wanted to make sure, again, in conformance with the conditions of approval, that they provided adequate onsite parking for their employees and for their customers, and that that parking was so signed. In the CUP, there are specified numbers and locations for parking. So, we worked with the staff at Victory Honda and their design professional, and we worked with them to prepare a striping plan, basically a parking plan, to meet the requirements of the conditional use permit. This striping and parking plan with signage, directional signage, was approved in this past month by our building department. A permit was issued for the installation, the striping and installation implementation of this plan, which would include the baller I mentioned on memory lane. They've hired a contractor, the contractor has begun work, and this would be for onsite striping as well as offsite striping, to more than meet the numbers indicated in the CUP. So, we have an approved striping plan, the contractor's been hired, the work has been begun, and I'm assuming that over the next couple of weeks, that work would be completed. In addition, there were concerns about maintaining the landscaping on the property, and we worked with the management at Victory Honda, they have provided to us a copy of their landscape management agreement with their landscape contractor to provide regular maintenance of their landscaped areas. Those are kind of the highlights of some of the work we've done with the Victory Honda staff and management in recent weeks and months. The striping plan is underway. In addition, there will be planters installed along the El Camino Real frontage, those have been ordered. I think that, as you look at the information that I provided to you, you have also kind of an overview from the Victory Honda staff of what they've done, and they've provided, I think, a good overview for you. And there are two representatives here tonight that would be happy to respond to any questions you have. So, you have the letter from Victory Honda, their management team is here, representatives are here, they are more than happy to step up and respond to your questions. At this point, I feel that, given the work that we've done, our staff, Associate Planner Matt Newbaum, has really been diligent in working with their staff, and really largely responsible for these agreements and this work that's been done. And so at this point, in my view, they've made good progress toward addressing the concerns that the commission and neighbors have brought forward in the past. We need to continue to monitor and assure that they comply with the conditions of the use permit, there's no question about that, but I believe that they're making very good progress. The management team is here this evening, if you have questions, I'm sure that they could respond. You have their letter before you, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for you, I mean, it's, obviously, it's under city staff discussion, but, so I guess it is technically agendized, if you will, right?
Yes.
Does this need to be opened up to public hearing, or, I mean, is this going to be...
I think it would be fine to do that.
I'm quite too sure where we want to go with this.
You know, through the chair, I think we have representatives from Victory Honda here, we have their manager here, and one of their owners, and so they could respond to your questions if you would like more clarification, and I think if you so desire to hear from the public, you could invite public comments as well.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Isn't it part of the administration, the meeting, that any member of the public who wants to speak on an item can simply approach the podium, and they have three minutes to talk?
I think in this case, the chair would direct that, there would be that opportunity, and the general manager of Victory Honda, Tanal Husan, is here and could speak to you as well.
Okay, thank you. You know, I think, what would be great, actually, I hope I'm within my right to do this, like this would be to have Victory Honda go to the podium, if you will, and to have the commissioners have any questions or comments for them, let's do it now, and then if the public, after that, we can open it up, the public has any questions or comments, we'll go down that road.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank Matt also, and the gentlemen for working with us, and, you know, making every effort to be a good neighbor, and the staff is aware of the situation that we've had in the past, and we definitely want to comply with all the items and concern, and I think we made quite a bit of progress in the last few months. So, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
At this point, commissioners have any questions or comments?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Some of the members of public have talked to me about this, and I live in San Bruno, I go past your business every day, sometimes two or three times, and it looks to me like you're doing a great, successful business there because the place is always loaded with cars. And my, at first I thought, well, there must be some time, it's not quite so many customers there, but there doesn't ever seem to be a parking place available on your property, ever, when you're open. Is that, do you have any real parking on your lot for customers?
This is the plan that we're, it's going, it's on the way right now, we are striping the lot to designate customer parking and also employee parking, so it'll be more parking available for customers on the lot.
So, does that mean in the future, at some date, is there a date that I could drive by and actually see some spaces that are open?
The striping should be finished, concluded, hopefully by the end of this week, so within a couple of week time, I think you can dive by and see the finished product.
Okay. And then the, two of the companies that I'm very familiar with that come to your business, frequently UPS and FedEx, I don't know that a business can survive without them.
Yes.
On the other hand, if there's no place for them to drive in and drop off their packages, they're going to end up double parking on El Camino Real, or parking in the red zone on Linden. Is there any plan that you have to make it possible for them to make deliveries?
Yes, we are designating a specific area for loading and unloading for vendors, on the lot, on the facility.
How can they get in and out? Will there be a U-shaped driveway or some path?
With the new striping, the new plan that we put together, it's going to be a lot simpler to, for these trucks to come in and out of the dealership. It's not going to be as loaded with vehicles like it used to be in the past, we do have some cars that are stored in a storage area, so we're going to free up some of the parking for the vendors and UPS and FedEx.
Will any of these customers, or UPS, FedEx, have to back out on El Camino to leave?
I don't believe so, not with the new plan.
Sounds great.
And through the chair, if I could, in terms of the striping plan, to give you a little bit more detail, the idea is that there would be 31 outdoor onsite customer parking spaces, and these would be striped, and in addition, there would be 10 parking spaces onsite for employees, and there would be an additional 40 offsite employee parking spaces on another nearby property on White Way. So the idea is along the lines of what you're talking about, Commissioner Peterson, in terms of trying to free up the site, to create more space at 345 El Camino Real, the idea is to provide an opportunity for employee parking nearby on White Way, so that there would be an opportunity for the employees to park there, be shuttled over, or come over, walk over, and free up some area onsite for deliveries and for customers.
Yeah, that's, how far away is White Way, isn't that up near...
It's near, it's across from the library.
Right.
Yeah.
That's a little bit of a walk.
We do have a shuttle that, for employees to be picked up. Some employees would love to, they like to walk, so it's a good exercise.
Any other questions for management of Victory, or comments from commissioners? Well, I would, I think you ought to be commended, I mean, maybe it's not the most popular opinion, but I think you guys are doing a really good job with all the issues that you've had to deal with over the last, you know, few years, and it's not an easy thing to do, to run a business, and you're right there on a busy El Camino, you've got a residential area right behind you, and, you know, I think you guys have done a really good job, along with staff, of, you know, getting together and trying to deal with the issues that have come up. So, from my perspective, that's my feeling on that. At this point, can we open it up to the public? Would anybody from the public like to comment or have a question for anybody from Victory? Could you please go up to the podium, if you would please, and state your name? We don't have a clock, but roughly three minutes-ish.
Yeah, I just wanted to, my name's Omar, I live in San Bruno, Fourth Avenue.
Thank you.
So when I heard about the UPS/FedEx thing, I'm a UPS driver, and I know we don't pull into driveways, and we don't back up, so delivering to Honda, I would suggest they should get a loading zone, you know, like right in front, so the trucks can just park and leave, instead of pulling in, because most drivers are instructed not to pull in. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Calista, I'm on Poplar Avenue, and, yeah, I have to say, a number of things have been improved as an experience, I mean, I can stand at my kitchen window, and I can look out and see the rooftop of Victory Honda and the site, and Super 8 and Walgreens, so we have a very upfront and close view of things. I appreciate through the chair what the project sponsor has been doing to improve their property. I will acknowledge the things that are progress, while I am still questioning why it's actually taken this long for certain things to comply with, but I will acknowledge that a number of things have been improved, of course. There are still outstanding matters. I would love, I understand that you just have that, so I would like to see the, I would like to see the plan, the site plan. I do also question how deliveries are going to be made successfully, the large vehicle deliveries to Victory Honda. I had noticed in the last couple of months, as they had been working on the roof, I was waiting for the parking plan, actually, ever since March, I did notice, I think on Thursday, they started resurfacing and then started the striping plan, and I happened by there at 6:50 this morning on my way to the city for work, I came across a Victory Honda employee and talked to him, but I also kind of, you know, was checking it out. I don't see where the onsite delivery is going to be, especially since I can't imagine, you know, going on and then backing out, and there is no circular drive. I also noticed in the, I realize it may not be enforced yet, you may not have your whole, through the chair, to the project owner, they may not have their entire plan in operation, but at 6:50 this morning, pretty much 90% of those spaces that were indicated for customers had cars in them, so they're not supposed to be open for customers at 6:50 in the morning. So anyhow, I understand some things are getting worked out. The one thing I wanted to say is thank you so much as a neighbor that the PA system got turned off. I saw after the last big brouhaha here, the next morning, we heard them experimenting with levels, and then it's been turned off. It's a couple of times it's flipped on since then, but pretty much you've killed that. It is still an ongoing challenge that we're dealing with, periodic, trying to find the cars or alarms going off. I'm looking at the conditions of approval from November 2003, so I'll refer back to that. I do notice that memory lane does seem to be, the right of way for pedestrians seems to be largely free and clear, I'm glad that they're not parking on that, I understand a baller is going in. There is still employee parking, I'm sorry to say, it's, that's happening on Linden, and I realize, I don't know how you're going to not do that, but I think the, having the parking onsite will help with that, but we do know up on Poplar and Elm and Niles and so on and so forth, that there are known Victory Honda employees, and we can see them regularly, that they're parking on those streets, which is fine, it's not, you know, in the conditions that they're not supposed to, but I just want to acknowledge that there's continued overflow, and I don't know if it's because they have not embraced and provided for this entire plan yet. The big thing that is still outstanding is the large delivery vehicles on Linden Avenue, and, where was it? Condition number 11, no vehicular access ingress or egress to the site from Linden Avenue. I realize there's no vehicular, but, you know, this keeps going, the large delivery vehicles that are there, they're servicing the operations for Victory, so I'm at a loss for how to make this difference, different. I commend them for growing their business, I'm really grateful that they're growing their business, that's fantastic, but having talked to one of the Victory Honda employees this morning, I understand that they, they too, the staff, is having a problem with a number of the large delivery vehicles, because the messages come down from management that they need to go out and tell, you know, the delivery vehicle drivers, you are not to park here, you need to go over there, and I can't say it in an open mic where I'm being recorded, but apparently there's been quite colorful language, essentially amounting to, I'm not moving my truck, you know, and so, I know that they're not Victory Honda employees, but they're servicing your business, so something else needs to happen, and I did suggest a number of months ago to staff, how about signs on the cyclone fence flanking memory lane, you know, all delivery, there's no signs there, I don't think, all deliveries need to be made for Victory Honda at 345 El Camino, so on and so forth, and then there needs to be some kind of a, or else, you know, here's your penalty. And then there needs to be some kind of a, or else, you know, here's your penalty, penalty fine. That may be one way to redirect them. Beyond that, I, I do think that they probably need some kind of loading, unloading, because I don't know on their actual surface, the dimensions of their site and where their cutouts are to go on to both of those lots. There's no room without a vehicle driving across memory lane for them, for a large delivery vehicle to make a circular thing. And I cannot imagine a large delivery vehicle going onto the site and then trying to back out onto El Camino. I hear from all sorts of neighbors who continue to ask me about this because apparently I'm a known face on this issue, and they are already noting that there is a lot of congestion that is happening on El Camino. So I don't know what would be surrendered if there was a loading zone, as one of the neighbors just suggested, for the large delivery vehicles, taking away maybe some of the public realm parking, but I wonder if that is a solution, to not have double parking, to not have it on the red zone. And I can't imagine that the drivers are going to be willing to pull on and pull off. So that is one thing I wanted to say, and a number of other things have been coming along. And the last part, because I should sit down if anyone else wants to talk, is if we're living with this conditional use permit, CUP 01-55, I'm imagining every six months there should be a compliance check-in. So after tonight, I commend what happened from March. Six months later, here we are, September. We have a great check-in. They've made progress on a lot of things that I appreciate. There are still things that they need to step up for. I imagine every six months, I just don't want the neighbors to have to get into a situation where it is years of, you know, kind of struggling before we finally, you know, have to do it up to here. So that would be my request, that that 17th condition is lived by for that check-in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishing to make a, make a comment? Looks like we have one more.
Hi, Russ Reed Avenue. I live over by White Way, and I just have never seen a shuttle from Honda pick up any employees there, and I'm just curious, is the shuttle driver, a full-time driver, is it actually a shuttle? Does somebody come by in a car and pick up employee here or there? I've just never seen it, and I'm just curious to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, the strapping is, is going on for employees for the, for the storage area where we have employee parking. We just put this plan in place. The people that park there, they are being shuttled. I mean, I, I'm sorry that he hasn't seen anybody being shuttled, but they are being shuttled. Whoever wants to be shuttled can be shuttled. Some employees, like I said, they do walk, and it's, it's in place.
So if I could ask you a question, is the shuttle clearly marked? I mean, does it say Victory?
No, it's, it's not. I mean...
Okay. That's probably why.
I mean, a veh- a vehicle that we'll, we'll go and pick up. I mean, we only have, we have a shuttle for, for customers. We're, we're not going to utilize that to shuttle employees to accommodate the customers, but...
I've got it.
We do have vehicles that do shuttle people.
Thank you.
Through, through the chair, if I could, I think that a couple of commissioners touched on this, and, and so did one of the public members. This plan is, is not completely im- implemented as of yet. So they've initiated work, they did a slurry seal, they're going to be striping, they are going to stripe an area on White Way for up to 40 spaces. At that time, there should be an opportunity for employees to park there. That's to come, and the, the management at Victory Honda will need to work with the staff. Similar to this letter that they put together in terms of just appropriate behavior, they'll need to make sure that they coordinate with their staff, and working with this concept of regular check-ins, I would expect that this striping plan be fully implemented over the next couple of weeks, that there would be a shuttle program, and that there could be in six months, an opportunity for another check-in. We heard a couple of comments from public members about this idea of a loading zone. That's something that we would need to check in with our TSBC committee about and look at that to see if there's an opportunity to do that. We'd be happy to do that, to, again, explore that as an opportunity for a, a loading zone, to, to see if that would work. So in terms of next steps, I think they've made a lot of progress. There are some comments that have been made so far on this matter tonight in terms of kind of getting some history, in terms of a fully implemented striping plan. What does that look like? How is it working? That would be a check-in opportunity, and then also to explore this opportunity for a loading zone, and we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I will thank the public and, oh, we have one more. I won't thank them yet.
My name is Scott Smith. I live on Poplar. First, I want to thank you guys from Victory Honda for what you've done. I actually think you've done a really commendable job in terms of an effort to meet the conditions of the conditional use permit, so I want to thank you. I also want to thank staff for all their hard work that they've done. I know, I know it's not always pleasant having someone in your business, but, you know, this, this has impacted the neighborhood. It's a continued impact on the neighborhood, you know, and it's something that we're going to continue to watch. You know, a couple of things, so I wanted to thank you. And the, and the, talking about the parking issue, because that's really the, the big elephant in the room in terms of unresolved issues. What's happening now, the cars are parking on Poplar, they park in front of the dealership, the two-hour parking, I think they, they, I'm sure they move the cars every now and then. I see the enforcement people out there every now and then writing tickets. They've gotten some spaces in Walgreens. I don't know how they got that. They cut a deal there, I'm not sure exactly. So I, I know they're trying to do a few things and trying to improve that, but it's, it's kind of all, you know, it's scattered, it's scattered around there, so we need to watch closely what happens with the restriping to make sure this actually has an impact. So, so there's been talk about not reviewing in six months or not having a public hearing in six months, but I would like to encourage that we continue our vigilance on this, and we talk about this again in six months to measure progress. I would also like to encourage that we look at a green zone for loading. I think that would benefit everybody and actually solve a lot of problems. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And the comments are taken, well taken, and I'm sure we can do, all right?
Again, just to clarify, staff would be, be more than happy to check back in in six months. There are a couple of areas we talked about, the implementation of the striping plan, monitoring kind of how that's working, and then exploring the loading zone. And then, just in general, we, we have a number of conditions of approval. We would continue to monitor those for compliance as well, but in terms of focus, striping plan, loading zone, and just in general, trying to ensure that they comply with their CUP conditions. And we'll check back in with you, give you an update in six months.
Very good. Thank you. Through the chair. Commissioner Peterson?
I'd like to ask the director, is it possible that you could return to the next planning commission meeting with an update on what the city's review of a loading zone out front on El Camino has turned up? Because the reason I bring this up so pointedly is because I'm more than familiar with UPS and FedEx. If they don't have a place to zoom in, dump their stuff and get out, they'll zoom in, double park and get out, or they'll zoom in and park on Linden. And the only force more certain than that is that water runs downhill.
We'd be more than happy to return to the planning commission with an update. I'm not going to commit to next month only because we need to coordinate with the TSBC. So as soon as we meet with the city engineer, bring this before the TSBC, and then have something to report back, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Last call. Close public comment. And bring it back to planning commission for, well, actually, city staff discussion. I guess we need to select the ARC Review Committee members or volunteer ARC Review Committee members for the October 12th.
Thank you very much, Chair Chase. So if we could have three volunteers for the October 12th Architecture Review Committee meeting, I would appreciate it. Who's first?
Volunteer again, Chair.
Chair Chase, thank you. And?
I'll volunteer as well.
Commissioner Lethan, thank you. Okay. Commissioner Mason, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so that is over and done with, and before I adjourn the meeting, I would like to thank and welcome, actually, our newest, our newest member. Welcome. And the other two are on my side over here. Here we go. Anyway, meeting adjourned.